Is available for public review. Tonight, we're going to have the invitation with Jeff Kelly.
I want to lead us in prayer. Before I pray, I just want to mention, we're going to say the flag to the flag in a few moments. And something I was told many years ago, it's, there's no comma after one nation. It's one nation under God. So that's kind of a pet peeve of mine. So when we say that, please don't pause. That's great. God, I am grateful to represent the ministerial association here in town, and particularly our church and our church family. As we come to this meeting, I pray your blessings upon the leaders. I'm grateful that we live in a place where members of the public can come and share their views and get a hearing. And we know that they do, that these council members are open to any suggestions or comments. And we appreciate that we live in that kind of place. So be with them as they deliberate tonight and give them your wisdom and guidance. I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements or recognitions tonight?
Just really quickly, we will have a planning commission next week. We've got a special exception request, so that'll be on Monday the 10th at 5:15. It's middle of October, so. And then, I'm trying to think, do we have anything else scheduled? Oh, yeah, it's in our, it's in the consent agenda, but it's probably a good thing to point out. We do have a comprehensive plan slash zoning regulation meeting. It'll be our fourth meeting with Miller and Associates. That's scheduled for February 27th. We invite everybody to come out for that. We're getting close. We spent a lot of time going through the zoning regulations and comp plan. And I did get a drive back from Jason Combs today asking me to go through and make sure that we've got all the changes to it. And we'll send it out to the planning commission, the council, the steering committee. And hopefully have a nice conversation and get these zoning regulations and comp plan and subdivision regulations done.
Thank you.
Is it upstairs?
Yeah, we'll do that upstairs.
Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved on one motion. Any item listed on the consent agenda made by the request of any single council member or public in attendance be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda. Council, do you have anything wonderful?
I don't, John, I don't have anything.
Staff? Any member from the public have anything from the consent agenda? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve items A, B, and C, C and D on the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor vote yea, opposed nay. I vote it's cast Jane, I vote it's cast May. We'll move on to the regular agenda, and it's an update regarding the sports complex project.
Yeah, so we just wanted to make sure we kept this item on here. I guess it's the 38th or the 39th time that we've had, well, I just go through a little bit of numbers, so. So this past couple of weeks, I just wanted to kind of update the council and the public as far as where we're at. January 21st, we met with Mammoth Construction Company and Sports Facility Company to work through the feasibility study timeline and review the data that we submitted. Tara actually submitted the data to SFC. So that way they can start preparing for their meetings out here on the 19th and the 20th of February. They're going to be contacting share, or stakeholders throughout town to kind of work through some questions that they may have, get opinions. And I hope that we're going to have the feasibility study completed around the middle part of March, which would be great because then we can send that out with our applications to the various philanthropic organizations when we start trying to get our grants out. And then also, we met with Paul Greger on the 21st as well, too. Kind of working through the financing portion of the sports complex project. We are looking at doing another band sale and then calling the bond anticipation notes with a bond sale then to occur after that. Based upon the numbers that Paul has been working through right now, we think we're going to have around $9 million through the band sale and the bond sale to put towards the sports complex project, so. Then on January 24th, we met again with Mammoth, and then this time Craig Bennett was a part of the conversation. He's our developer that we've been utilizing, employed by Miller and Associates. And we've been working through a subdivision timeline and then also questions that Mammoth had with relationship to the subdivision and vice versa. There are some questions that Craig had as well, too. We were talking about materials for the build out of the infrastructure, pipe types, drainage questions, things like that. And so, just so everyone knows, we're probably looking, well, I'll move forward to the next conversation that we had. On January 28th, we met with Craig Bennett to specify the portions of the property that we are looking at taking to the council and planning commission as a final plat versus a preliminary plat. Our plan is to go ahead and run preliminary plats in March and final plats in April because we don't know exactly how the design is going to look or what that subdivision is going to include. A portion is going to be final, for sure, the sports complex area will be final. And then probably some of the commercial lots. And maybe a portion of what has been deemed maybe a mixed use commercial slash residential. Those will all be part of the final plat. Then we'll be looking at what to do with the remainder of the property as it relates to residential properties and commercial properties. Let's see, February 3rd, we, that's today. February 3rd, we received word that the municipal infrastructure aid program grant awards are going to be announced on February 7th. We wrote the my app grant application for water and street extension coming up with Q Street. If we get more than, and we'll see, I mean, it's all competitive. So if we get anything, that would be our first priority. If we add something more, then we could look at doing some additional water and street infrastructure as part of this project. Also, today, we had an opportunity to speak with Senator Fishers Washington, aides, as well as the Nebraska office aide for Western Nebraska, to discuss water and sewer and the upcoming federal appropriations. Applications for appropriations are due in April, so we'll work on that. Pat Pover, utilities director, Kyle Potter, public works director, Tara Cutter, Lynn Doak, and myself were part of those conversations. And we will continue to look at our projects and see what we can, and some things won't, you know. And so we'll keep on working through that process. Tomorrow, I know that Tara and I have a grant meeting with Jessica Boardner to go through all of our applications and the timelines. February is going to be a busy month. We also know that Lori Ashop is working on the CCCF that grant right now for us. The due date for that is February 15th. And then on this Friday, we're going to continue with our biweekly meetings with Mammoth. And Troy Geegling of Mammoth actually told me that they're working on a live model to share with our community here soon. So we're looking forward to seeing what that looks like. I think that's it. I don't know if there's anything that you guys can think of that we missed out on. That's the report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is updating discussion on the sports complex project regarding Mid Plains Community College.
And I'll, I'm going to go ahead and go through the background first.
Okay.
And then if anybody wants to speak, they're very welcome to. I would like to go through the background here real fast.
Okay.
So I'm just going to read the report that I submitted along with the council packet. And if anybody asks questions, you can feel free to ask me. So the city is working on finding a way to bring Mid Plains Community College into its sports complex build out. On January 8th, the Mammoth Sports Construction Design Team met with personnel from the college to introduce themselves and provide background on projects Mammoth has constructed. To show good faith towards MPCC, MCC, at the following McCook City Council meeting, the council approved adding MCC Athletic Director slash Baseball Coach John Olson and MCC Softball Coach Mike Mendenhall to McCook's Sports Complex Committee to get their preferences and insight on the project, particularly the amenities most important to the college. Around that same time, the president of Mid Plains Community College and the McCook City manager spoke about Mammoth serving as a sports complex designer. MPCC's president expressed that his staff and himself are comfortable with Mammoth serving as the design team for the sports complex. MPCC's president expressed the college's biggest remaining issue is that the college wants to own the championship field, both baseball and softball. MPCC's president stated the college would like the city of McCook to subdivide the championship fields from the remainder of the sports complex, with MPCC to pay the city for the land the field's occupied. MPCC's president stated the college currently has $4.5 million in different forms to build out the championship fields with the possibility of more if we were to own the championship fields. And by different forms, it'd be different pots that that money would come from. Mammoth is in the process of putting the numbers together for the total project cost, which will also include breakdowns for individual components. The estimate for the complete sports complex is approximately $15 million. Paul Greger of DA Davidson, which is McCook's department director, informed the city of McCook that the remaining voter-approved half-cent local option sales tax revenue dedicated to recreational projects could potentially generate $9 million. As such, between the city, college, and community hospital, the amount that could be available for the sports complex would stand at $14 million. That does not include any amounts from the recently awarded RCRP grant to the city of McCook or any other fundraise slash grant dollars. There are few issues to consider regarding the college's proposal that need to be discussed prior to determining the feasibility of the college's request, with a few of the items listed as follows. One, assuring that all McCook stakeholders have access to the championship fields. Two, determining whether ownership in two separate entities would complicate fundraising efforts. Three, determining whether ownership in two separate entities would complicate securing potential grants. Four, determining how to split revenue to provide both parties with adequate funds to operate and maintain their individual properties, both now and into the future as the sports championship fields will more than likely be the largest revenue producer of the sports complex. Five, determining how much each party would pay for common spaces such as restrooms, concessions, parking lots, and practice areas. Six, certification of funds to ensure both parties have the ability to build their respective phases of the project. Seven, naming rights in conjunction with the city's current obligations, because we have obligations to Mr. Walters. Eight, determining how the requested split would impact the city's subdivision efforts with respect to the totality of the real property purchased in October of 2024. Nine, whether the city will be responsible for paying for construction costs associated with the championship fields, and if so, how much. And 10, whether the college is in a position to comply with the city's quick construction timeframe. The city of McCook does not want to delay the construction of this project any longer. City staff has recently contacted the attorney who helped the city develop a purchase agreement with the project when the project was slated to be constructed in Western McCook. His name is Mr. Austin McHillips, McHillip. Mr. McHillip has expressed a willingness to assist with potential joint partnerships slash use agreements with the college. It is important, or sorry, it's McCook's intent to work with the college regardless of ownership on developing a partnership or use agreement that will address all potential concerns. That said, city's direct staff strongly believes ownership of the sports complex should be held in the city of McCook. Numerous communities have similar ownership slash partnership slash use agreements with their respective municipalities, including Norfolk Northeast Community College, Carney UNK, Sewer and Concordia University, and York New York College. The city and MPCC slash MCC have operated under a similar arrangement since 2002 with the JC complex, with the city leasing the property from Red Willow County and permitting the college to use the property for its baseball and softball facilities. To the same point, when the sports complex was considered for construction in Western McCook, the plan was for the city to own the property with the city, college, and McCook Public School District to enter into a joint operation maintenance agreement for continued care of the facility. City staff has never received an explanation why the college's position has changed from the arrangement contemplated in 2023. The city of McCook is committed to bringing MPCC, MCC into the sports complex project, whether the college pledges $4.5 million or less than that amount. The city is committed to meeting the objectives of MPCC, MCC, and their desires in the sports complex. The college's success is important to McCook's success and vice versa. City staff feel a joint project with the city serving as the complex owner, pursuant to partnership that was contemplated in 2023, is the best way to assure the project is completed quickly and with as little complications as possible. It is city staff's hope that MPCC wants the same thing. The type of unified arrangement contemplated by the city staff will show that McCook and MPCC, MCC are committed to one another in Southwest Nebraska. As the city has learned with its partnerships with the MEDC, Community Hospital, McCook Public School District, and others, McCook citizens appreciate cooperation between our community's pillars. There is no better way to get the public support for this sports complex project than working here both now and into the future.
Thank you. Okay.
We'll start with John, Mike might add stuff to it.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Well, first off, I'm going to say that I'll answer the question that Nate had mentioned that he doesn't believe was ever answered. I'm solution oriented, and at that point in 2023, I believe we were a sailmate. This project was, was going nowhere. And so I did bring to Nate in a phone call that we would be interested, if once they secure the ground with Walters, that we would consider possibly partnering if we could own the, those grounds underneath our fields. And that has not changed since the fall of 2023. That is the exact reason that we, our position changed, because we felt we were going nowhere. So that's, that's why.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
So going to where we're at now, under the request for partnership. You know, we agreed, I live in North Platte, where there's a lot of instances where North Platte does not get along with each other. You know, you have baseball on the south side, you have softball on the north side. You've got two media college campuses, and we could go on and on and on. So I appreciate going to work together, and I appreciate the reasons the city has, but we also have reasons that we would like to consider the same. Partnerships require two collaborative partners, and we really believe that. And I will say that in the last several months, we've had conflicting information received. We met in October, we had talked about what this could look like. October 31, with a follow-up meeting with that, with John, Mike, Kelly, and myself. And I mentioned the same thing, wanted to know about ownership and naming opportunities for those two specific fields. But I also said that we'd like to sit alongside through this process, to feel that we felt that this would be something we could work jointly on. At some point, if it wasn't, then we'd walk away, and at least we know we tried. So after that meeting, we were not, we were not brought in to, to provide input on RFP, or review the RFP, even any of the firms that have submitted the art, that submitted their packet for the RFP. On January 8th, we did meet with Mammoth, followed up the next day. Mr. Snyder tries to call me, called board members, trying to get my feedback on that conversation. I finally did meet up with a conversation with Nate on, on January 13th. Same thing, wanted to know naming opportunities, ownership. And when I, when I got the request from Tara on Wednesday about coming to this meeting, I said it's kind of short notice. I wouldn't like to have the answers that I asked for on January 13th. And the response I got, I had was, that's why I wanted you in front of the city council to provide those answers. So a lot of the information that Nate provided, this is not a list that I received personally up to this point. And so I think a conversation and meeting between administrations would have been more helpful to, to provide answers to some of those as opposed to this, this arrangement. So that's where I'm at right now. I'd ask Kelly any feedback or things she has to say.
You know, I was just saying, you know, we were very impressive, Mammoth. And so had we been in on any of those conversations earlier, we probably would have also been very impressed with them. And they blew me away. They were all very impressive. But it's like being invited in at halftime. And so it was kind of, you know, we would have been, you know, at the same table very early on in the process. But like I said, it was like being invited in at halftime. And even now, having, like, having all these conversations happen without us being at the table, it's, it's hard to, it's hard for us to come in and say, yeah, we want to be part of a project that's just rolling. I mean, saying you've had 39 conversations about it, and this is one of the first ones that we've been at the table for.
And I will tell you that on the conversation I had with Nate on January 13th, because back in October, it was said that you were going to have our contract to farm that ground in 2025 as a supply 2026 project. The first I saw of the accelerated timeline was on January 15th. When I talked to Nate on January 13th, he said, yeah, I'm going to have to talk to Mammoth about slowing that project down. Now there is comment that we might slow the project up. We're two weeks past that. So I don't know where they're at, I don't know what the cost is. I know what my donors have, but I also have a member board that spreads out from Kansas, South Dakota, Gotham, to Ogallala. They have a whole lot of priorities on their plate besides just McCook. And so I have that. I have the McCook College Foundation Board also, which is a huge fundraising for us. So we had 4.5 million. I can't tell you that I have still have 4.5 million for the donors that were secured months and even a couple of years ago. But I'll do my best to bring them back if this is something that we can agree to.
And I guess I would also point out, just getting the agenda and getting the background, I wish it would say background according to city officials. That background and those reasons are just according to city officials. That's not our background. That narrative that was shared is not our narrative at all. Because those 10 reasons, I could give you 10 reasons why we should own it. You know, I could say, we don't get a lot of revenue from our games. We don't get a lot of revenue for championship things. The naming rights would not be an issue at all. If there was separate ownership, there would not be a naming rights conversation. They, the city fields would have naming rights of anything that the owners wanted. If we get separate ownership, the naming rights would not be an issue. The Benjamin could do whatever they wanted on their naming rights. Or whatever, whatever other donors were involved. The obligations, the, Mammoth flat out told us, we could break out whatever cost you guys want, however you want to do, and however many parking slots, all of those things. Common spaces, we can have those conversations, construction costs, splitting up those costs, obligations, even access. I think we can have just great conversations if we were good partners about what access needs to be for the communities, for the, for whoever needs to use it. I think that's going to be just conversations that we can have about who needs to have access to those fields. We've had the same conversations with the event center. You know, what, what do we need to do to partner? We partner with RPAC, we partner with the high schools, we partner with MACATAC, all kinds of things that we already have in place for MOUs that we can get, get in place. So I just think that we've proven, and I remember sitting in that city auditorium when, I'll never forget, I chilled when Dale Doom was like, somebody needs to think big and have these big projects. And we were all sitting there thinking, and then the, like, whatever, the next month Troy runs, put the, you know, the McCook on the move projects together. This is like a culmination of all of those things. And I think we're right here. And the one thing that John said after we moved to Mammoth, he was like, this is the closest we've ever been. Let's stay at that table. It's, that's where we want to be. We want to be at the table, but it does not make sense for us to invest even whatever it is, three, four, whatever million, if we don't own it. That does not make any sense to taxpayers, doesn't make any sense to our donors if we don't own the property.
And we have a similar arrangement with the city Valentine. They passed the sales tax renewal and gave a million dollars, half of the cost of that entire campus. We have an agreement with them. If the legislature changed district lines and says you're no longer serving Mid Plains Community College, the city gets back, and they can give it to Western or to Eastern, whatever they want to. We have those arrangements already. Same thing with if the governor or someone says media colleges should no longer have athletics. Those are conversations and agreements that we could have back with the city to say, if we have to hold up shop for whatever reason, financial or legislative, go back to the city because we have no use for it. So there are, there are ways we can cross a lot of the questions that you have. But serving the community, absolutely. In small town Nebraska, again, I believe in collaboration, collaboration. And that's why I came back to the table in the fall of 2023, said, I think we can get this team back together, but we need to have ownership. And those two fields haven't joined any agreement on parking, whatever else it is, we figure it out, and we'll figure it out. But again, I'm a solution oriented, and I'm going to look for those ways to do it. The Elks Club, that thing would be sitting vacant right now had I not went to the legislature and said, I need $10 million, and I'm going to put $9 million back. Because I don't know how we'd have fundraised $9 million to put that thing back together. But I think we've proven that with the quality of our projects and our facilities in this community, that we are here for the long haul. We're going to invest in our community, and I think the Middle Small and Softball Field is the next step. John and Mike, from your standpoint?
I mean, for me, I've been in a lot of conversations from the very beginning, and obviously super excited for this. And I am 100% on what is best for the community, and I am 100% put by the college and support, you know, what we want to do as well. You know, I know there's questions, you know, shared views, you know. I'm a, I was president of the American Legion Board for eight, nine years in a row. Now I'm the vice president, still auto. Grew up here, graduated high school here, want this project to be successful. Want to work with whoever to make the arrangement fair so everybody can use it, so the community stakeholders. This needs to be a community project. I get it. I fully get where we're coming from as a college. You know, I've heard a couple of other things, you know, to build out the maintenance. I would just encourage you to drive to the college and go through the buildings. And every one of those buildings is a fully functional pristine building. McMillan Hall built in 1935. The dorm built in 1960, $5 million upgrade six, seven years ago. Library, 1972, what was that upgrade? $2.5 million, a couple of years ago. Like old buildings that are perfectly functional buildings. And not, and, and some of them are back to that. I'll give you just a quick story. I was an employee at the college in 2002. I came back, I left, came back in 2007. Was January, excuse me, July 5th was my interview. I was in a student tie, not a student tie guy. July 5th, 105 degrees. They said, hey, we're going to give you a tour now. I said, no, I was, I was an employee here five years ago. I don't need a tour. I went ahead and took it. In five years, every single building had been, there had been an upgrade to it. Like, the college knows facilities. I fully trust Ryan and the college to build out a great facility. And I fully trust the partnership that we would have with the city to have a great working relationship. And that would be my goal. And I think it's extremely impossible to do. And, you know, again, I think everybody in this room would be in somewhat agreement if, if, if a certain entity is going to, you know, put forth that type of money for something. You know, I don't think ownership would be out of the question of something that they would want out of it, too. Like I said, I want this agreement to work. I'm willing to, you know, work with whoever to make it work. Because it needs to work for the city. It doesn't just need to work for me and the college or Mike and the college. It needs to work for the community. And like I said, I've born and raised here, spent out for about 10 years, college, some other stuff.
And I call, I call them two of the colleges on the list. I'm not, I didn't call private colleges because I think they're just enough different. But I call both UNK and Northeast. And sometimes they work, and sometimes they don't. It depends on his administrative leading of his entities. And so I think we can get rid of a lot of finger pointing if we can draw that line to say, this is ours and this is yours. If these things break, it's on you to fix them. When the turf needs replaced, it's on you to fix them, not having to come to the city council and say, I need to do your pockets another million dollars to fix this at this time. That's on us. And I think we proved that with what we've done with our facilities, that we will maintain our facilities, and they will be something that the city of McCook is proud of. And we will partner with the clubs, we will partner with the legions, we will make sure that those fields get used by more than just the college.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I do have one quick question, just curious. We were going to go out and ask if there's going to be a city-owned facility. I think they agree on that. What changed between there and this new project?
I don't think the contract ever said it was a city-owned facility. I think where we got to be, I think where we were at the end was, and Pam could correct me because she was in all of those meetings. We had talked towards the end before you decided to pursue the Walters property, that we would sell the city the ground underneath the fourplex that the city would own and operate. And that changed then when the city said they wanted to go with the Walters life, and let's flip it over.
Okay, Pam?
That's not true. We had come to an impasse. And so our last offer had been, because you said you can only, you only have 5 million. And we said, okay. So we will go out and do the fundraising, and we will raise the 15 million needed. And the college would then, in order for me, as And the college would then, in order for me as the college foundation, my job is to find money for the college. I, it's hard for me to justify finding money for the city, but I can go find money for the college. So we had come to you and said, we will own the project. We will build the project and we will sell you the fourplex that the city can then own. And it would be five million. And so that way you would not have the onus on you to do all the building and we would do that. And that was where, where we never, never could get off of that.
I don't believe the fourplex was ever discussed as far as us owning it. At the end of the day, the city was going to pay the five million dollars to own the facility.
Five or six million.
Five or six million. That, that's what was.
That's actually how I understood it.
That's the way it was. That's the way it was.
And at that time, so the last time we met, we actually had a conversation saying that the plan as it was presented. So originally in March of twenty twenty three, the city of McCook had proposed a purchase agreement. Based upon the representations of the donors, um, and, you know, whoever was affiliated with the donors. That the city of McCook would go ahead and contract with the college foundation. The college foundation or the donors were gonna own the property during the build out. And then at completion, because there were some workarounds that we had to figure out how to make sure that we were complying with the state of Nebraska's laws. We were like bidding rules and things like that. At the very end, we were gonna go ahead and purchase that. So that way we didn't violate any of the bidding laws. As time went on, that changed. So in July of twenty twenty three, a new agreement, purchase agreement was given to us that said the city of McCook was gonna have the finance to build out. The other thing we weren't getting was details as far as what was going to be included with the sports complex. Which we need to make sure that we have, so that way the taxpayers know what they're getting ahead of time. Um, and we kept on asking if that information would be able to be sent.
I don't think it's a completely fair question to ask, uh, when you ask us what's changed, when it had been told to us. It had been told to us at some point during these negotiations, where do we stand? And it was told to us, you can purchase land from the city to build out your fields.
But that was before we realized how much space we had, John. We didn't know how much space we had. This is more than just a sports complex. This is a commercial, residential, recreational complex. That is going to hopefully serve as a shot in the arm for the community. And it gives us the ability to expand into other areas that we haven't been able to pass. So a lot of the conversations that we had, that was when we were just trying to figure out what the heck we were going to do. You know, after we had that meeting over at CBS Constructors, there was a comment that was made by, I can't remember if it was a call with the donors or who it was. They were gonna contact the city of McCook after two to three days and say, hey, this is where we stand. I never received a phone call from anyone, but a phone call. So we actually reached out to try to get the Benjamins to say, hey, this is kind of where we're at. You know, and, and again, they said, no, you know, we're not willing to go ahead and compromise. And so at that point in time, that's when we had to look at other options and figure out, okay, are there other places where we could build? So that way we're not building on leased ground over at the Duson Complex that we don't own. And so that's when the discussions occurred with, with John and Deborah. So that way we could start trying to figure out, is there a better solution than what we currently have? But we have tried our hardest to work with everyone and sometimes it hasn't been reciprocated.
Well, I guess I'm going to agree to disagree. Because we were given times when we'd be given a purchase agreement. We'd sit down, we'd work out the purchase agreement. The purchase agreement would come back to us and it'd be completely different than what we all sat down to and agreed to.
That's because the Benjamins changed the purchase.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about times when we sat in your office. And, and this is, again, I'm just going to agree to disagree with you and, and because that's long gone.
It is, and we need to put all, we need to put all that behind, but I want to correct you. The reason why we made changes to the purchase agreement is because the Benjamins made changes. But anyway, we need to, we need to bury the hatchet.
We need to move forward on this. This is not. We don't need to be going in this direction right now. I feel like this project is a new, a new beginning. A new, we need to start fresh from this whole thing. I feel like there's been a lot of things that have transpired over this and I, I really, I think we're missing out on an opportunity to do a bigger project together. And I, and I know you guys want to own it and I think that we can work out some sort of lease agreement or whatever that is. Some sort of agreement that fits exactly what you guys need and you can maintain it, you can do all that. I agree with John. You guys do a great job of maintaining facilities. That's, that's great. But I think if you do a separate project, you're not gonna have as much money to do the actual build out that you want to do without us being in that project.
Yeah, I have an answer to that.
What I'm trying to tell you though, is I think that working together is the best option for the community.
I don't disagree.
And I don't think you guys owning it is actually the best for that, for getting your money.
And I may agree to disagree with you on there. So I think, unfortunately, I think, I think I'd go agree to disagree. There's a lot of more benefits for us to own that project, the same benefits.
Do you think that's the best for the community? Or do you think that's the best for the college?
Agreement that we could make, I think is best for all parties because we are.
I'm gonna agree to disagree, okay?
And I think there's a way, and I think Mammoth, they are rock stars. And I really feel there's a way that you can still focus on the project and we can do a combined project. Where the ownership piece, it doesn't really matter what's underneath, where the ownership piece, the project, they can build out separately. But the project itself is a combined project. I truly feel like they were very, um, which John asked some very specific questions about how they could build this out and how they could mark things.
But there's more than just the project build out. There's annexation, there's plating, there's all sorts of different stuff.
And I understand that.
Very costly sewer, infrastructure, all that, but that's very costly. But to do that as a whole project and lease up that, that piece of it, you're gonna have a lot more money.
So here, here's a question that I wasn't able to answer and I haven't asked it necessarily. But when you guys are willing to sell to homeowners and commercial, why would you not be willing to sell to the college then?
It's not that we're not willing to, we want the biggest project possible for the community.
Okay.
So someone's gotta pay for that infrastructure. Talk to either the college or the city. Someone's gotta pay for it.
Yeah, and we're gonna be selling commercial and residential.
I know, which was you said that it would be, and it costs us more if we split it.
It's gonna cost the college more, yes.
We're, we have fundraisers that we will solicit to build out.
I'm, that's just my opinion. I'm just telling you my opinion.
But someone's gotta pay for it, but it's the same college. Together, that infrastructure has to be paid for to finish that project.
I agree.
So our first plan, and I guess this is a probably a good point, or a good place to kind of talk about the project that we have moving along right here. Cause there's a lot of people that probably haven't seen this, this concept or don't know what's going on.
And Ryan has seen it.
I, I have seen it.
So we are looking at. Is there any way that we can scroll up or down? Oh, sorry, scroll down. So here we are, this is West Q Street. This is Highway eighty three. West Q Street is improved. Uh, West Q Street has water on it. It does not have sewer. This is Highway eighty three. It's got, um, water, the streets improved. These streets here are already plotted. This is R Street, S Street, T Street and U Street. Um, what we are talking about is a mixed use tract. So that way we've got commercial, like we've talked about it so many times, but Kyle and I have had so many different businesses that have come to us and say, we want to move to McCook. We want to locate McCook, but there aren't any great spots for that. And so this would alleviate some of those issues. We also would be able to address the residential lot shortage that we know that we've got. Personally, I went to the twenty twenty two, uh, residential study that the EDC completed. Um, you'd have single family all the way around here. This is about twenty to thirty lots right here. Then you'd have multifamily residential, so those would be your apartment complexes. And we've talked about maybe doing this as a preliminary plat with the EDC. So that way we can kind of be a little flexible on whether or not this is gonna be commercial or multifamily. Or if it's gonna be a facility like you see in a larger city that has commercial on the ground floor and apartments up above. This also has been put, so we actually declared this blight of standard in two thousand nineteen. Which allows us to use tax increment financing for development purposes. Which at the end of the day is what developers want to see in order to be able to attract. Of course, we're gonna meet the blood four tests and all that, but, but, um, that's already been taken care of. We've had conversations with developers. I know that Charlie's in the back here. He's been a part of those conversations. Uh, city staff has been a part of those conversations. Um, one of the things that we're talking about doing, so the MYAP grant. Okay, we've got prizes for everything. So we've talked to Miller and Associates. We did a redevelopment plan in October of twenty twenty four. Uh, in order to qualify for the MYAP grant. And that redevelopment plan basically falls in line with the Nebraska Community Development Act, which will allow us to use tax increment financing for the build out. But that put our foot in the door at least to go ahead and get considered for a municipal infrastructure aid program, right? Which is a B E B program. Uh, we applied for four million dollars. Can't say we're gonna give four million dollars, but that's where we're at right now with that. Uh, as part of our wastewater treatment plant project, we contemplated, I, I started talking to John two thousand nineteen, would you say? John, does that sound about right?
Well, our formal negotiations started in December of twenty thirty.
Right, but when we were talking about the possibility of extending sewer through, we're talking about.
Yeah.
That was probably about twenty nineteen. So we had already been kind of looking at this property. With me and then I know we had had conversations, I know you and Kyle had conversations regarding drainage and accessing the property for that.
Yes.
And, and so we had already been kind of looking at this as a place where we'd want to develop in the future, not knowing what was gonna be there. Whether it was gonna be a sports complex or residential. I was thinking residential at that time, but, you know, this kind of transpired. But what we had talked about as part of our wastewater treatment plant project, here at the Clary subdivision, that's the project that was TIF back in two. We actually did the blight of substandard study in twenty twelve that encompassed this property here. And then in twenty fifteen, we did the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment contract for Clary Village. In twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we did the redevelopment plan, redevelopment comp, uh, contract for Quill and Courts. And we started building all this out right here. But also we started building out along R Street. So the six to seven houses that you see on R Street, that was part of a, a long-term plan to try to develop more residential properties on that northwest side of town. The other thing that we did was we built sewer out here, knowing that at some point in time, it will just, um, serve Clary subdivision. So those five or six houses that you see being, being built out there right now, that's the second phase of Clary subdivision. The other thing that we did was we said, okay, this sewer line could actually come off of Clary subdivision, somewhere around here. Go east to west on S Street. We could put that sewer line into the highway, so we board under the highway. So that way now we've got access to this property up here. That's all on improved land that can be developed for whatever purpose. So we've been thinking about this for a long, long time. Um, and, and at the end of the day, this project is gonna be the project that I think will kickstart McCook into something great. I'm excited about the future, about the prospects. We want to work with the college. On the flip side, we don't want to put ourselves in a position where we don't have the ability to control terms. And ultimately, this has got to be a city facility. It's got to be a community facility. And I think we can work out a use agreement, because we're saying the same thing. You guys want a use agreement, we want a use agreement. But at the end of the day, we've got so many different pieces of the puzzle we still have to do. Subdividing, coming up with fundraising. I don't want to fundraise against the college. You know, I don't want to go after the same philanthropic organizations and say, hey, you know, they're doing a project and we're doing a project. Which one are you gonna choose? Hey, we're gonna go to the community foundation or the Graff charitable foundation or whomever it is and say, who are we going to have you pick? Them or us? To me, if it's a combined effort with a joint use agreement that is bargained for through a process of negotiations, it makes perfect sense.
Anyone else?
Can I just add, um, that, um, I certainly support the college being a part of this, um, what's going to happen with the sports complex. And, um, uh, as far as ownership is concerned, I was contacted, like, like you said, I was part of a sewer project a couple of years before December of twenty three. And, um, it all sounded good to me as far as putting the sewer line and extending it up to Highway eighty three. Um, but in December of, of twenty three, I was contacted where the city was interested in buying the land. They were the only ones that contacted me, solely the city. And, um, it was not only the sports complex, but for commercial development and housing. All of this sounded excellent to me. We were in, in good faith negotiations for ten months over this. The meetings were great, really no disagreements, but it did take ten months. Um, the one thing the city, um, made clear to me that I got out of every meeting was that, uh, the city needed to own this property to receive grants. That's one thing that stood out. No one else was involved in this, the city of McCook and the city owner. Um, everything I saw was, was good for the city. I agreed with, with, uh, the price, the naming rights, everything. So we entered in a purchase agreement with the city and the city only. And, um, this is where it stands right now. So, um, would I have entered a purchase agreement? If I knew there was another owner or subdivision in this, my answer is no. So this would be a moot point at this place and the stage with the sports complex, because I wouldn't not have sold that land. I did not need to sell that land. The city approached me. I didn't approach the city.
Thank you.
That's where I stand on it.
Thanks, John.
And I do want to clarify another thing too, um, when, and I'm not trying to, to, um, I guess I gotta give the city's point of view with respect to when we're doing the RFQ, RFP process for the design firm. And the thought process related to who is gonna be on the sports committee. And it was, I had this conversation with college personnel. I know I talked to John about this. I know I talked to Ryan about this. Our concern was everything was so convoluted and like Brian said, we were at a stalemate. It had gotten so convoluted and we were trying to give you this process with the direction that we were going. There were conversations that were being had. The last thing that I wanted to do was get to this point. And because of prior conversations that maybe groups of us had had with, you know, construction firms, whatever the case may be. That maybe that it would look like there was an appearance of bias. So there's a reason why John and Mike weren't included. There's also a reason why Kyle and I weren't included on there. Because the last thing that I wanted to do was for anybody to have any ammunition to say that we didn't do things the right way. But we built the RFQ to make sure that we prioritized the championship baseball field and the championship softball field. Those were included in there. And I had told the college that, hey, as soon as we select a firm, then that's the appropriate time to add more people to the committee. But all that was done was selecting a firm. We didn't do any of the design work prior to that. Now is the opportunity and obviously everybody is really excited about Mammoth. This is a time to sit down and think about what this is gonna look like, what we can afford, what we can do. And the council has already appointed John and Mike to serve on the committee moving forward. So because we want to have the colleges' thoughts on this, we want them to be a participant. They're right at the very top, maybe the most important user out there. Um, so anyway, that was the, the mind frame or the mindset that we had when we were trying to figure out, what does this committee look like? And how do we make sure that the stuff that happened in the past doesn't upend what we're doing right now?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Another thing that would concern me is if, if, if there are separate owners with. with, right now, we're just dealing with the college. What if someone else wanted to jump in and own one of these fields? Can you deny them? That's certainly something that would have to be looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a comment. One thing I want to say is thank you to the city for involving, going after grants. I was contacted last week to help write a CCCFFF, a CCF grant. I really appreciate the opportunity to do that. In all honesty, those grants make a huge difference. I just sent it to you on email. So hopefully you have it in your email box. So thank you for being proactive in that way. And I have, we have a relationship with the school and I know I don't necessarily half represent the school right here. I'm also a citizen of McCook. Partnerships, I've already heard it said by several people here today, but they're extremely important. And for the school to function successfully, we do have to work through these issues. And we have successful partnerships with the college and we have very successful partnerships with the city. And the city is attentive to our needs. So I want to thank the city for being attentive to our needs and taking, and what I mean by that is taking care of the small parts that we have now. I appreciate the work that you've done there and I appreciate the work that you've done here. And I have another relationship with the city and I appreciate, and that is the pool. And I know we're talking about fees later and I'm going to express that we all should be, no, I'm kidding. But I really appreciate the work that you do, but I agree with what's been said. I know Jared, you've talked about it a little bit, so others, but the partnership's really important. And we can, you can work through this, whatever this is that you're facing right now. It can be overcome. And I would ask entities not to dig in their heels.
Thank you.
Can I hold off from back here?
Yes.
So.
Please state your name and who you will.
Okay. I'm Jonathan McCook, so I have to represent. I apologize. We, many of us in this room have spent hundreds of hours together over the last couple of years on this project and other projects. And it's been a roller coaster. We set out to do probably something no other community would ever think was possible. When we did this, the YMCA, the pool, adaptive playground and a lot of other things at the same time, the pickleball stuff. And I think most people within you are crazy. And we're sitting here now with the YMCA that's beginning to break ground, seeing the pool that people are using, adaptive playgrounds fully paid for, and this thing is sitting here ready to get done. And I know there's a lot of stuff that happened on that roller coaster ride and there's a lot of miscommunication that happened. There's a lot of discussions that have been had. I've been in most of them on both sides. And I totally can see both sides of a lot of the story and why there's some feelings that have been hurt. But I think all of you know what we're trying to accomplish. Whether this ends up being owned 100% by the city or some of it gets sold off, I'm not going to be the judge of that. What I would like to think though, is that whatever ends up happening is that this doesn't end up delaying the project by another year. If we can have Mammoth breaking ground this summer, because the funds are there and the work's all been done legally on the different agreements, that's what I want to see, whichever direction it goes. And if it can't be done in one way and have it start this summer, then I would prefer that we go the other way. And so, you know, if the college can do what they have to do to fund that whole thing and it can be sold and the city and you can work that out great. But my concern would be whether or not we're so close to that June or July period where they want to break ground that we may box ourselves into one direction. I don't know if that's what Jared was kind of leaning towards as well or not, but we're too close. All of us spent a lot of time on this and we all have the same thing, so let's just get it done.
My last question would be is if you have nine million, that's all we have, what does it get to? We have to build phases, correct?
Well, I know we've got a half million from the hospital. I know we've got $800,000 for the RCRP grant. So we're probably sitting in about 10 million right now. With respect to the remainder, we'll go out, we'll fundraise, we'll write grants, we'll do whatever we have to do. But I would prefer to do it with the college. I mean, you know, regardless, I mean, you know, and like you had said, I mean, you know, it's good for the community. It's good for the college. It's good for Southwest Nebraska, McCook as a whole. Increases, hopefully the population increases the tax base, increases sales tax. Hopefully, we can decrease the burden on our taxpayers. Hopefully, we can decrease, you know, the concerns that we have as far as trying to bring people to McCook, you know, having the amenities people want in order to make McCook an attractive place. To me, I think we can get through this process. I think we can get a use agreement in place. But my recommendation stands. I think it needs to be a city and McCook facility. And I think that we can work through whatever it is, whether it's a joint partnership agreement, whether it's a use agreement, whatever the case may be. I think we can get that figured out. But we need to know where the college stands. And if the college is willing to go ahead and put something in, maybe even less than 4.5 million dollars, that's fine. That's okay.
The college has donated a million dollars to college ball facilities. That's what the college has control over. The college does not have control of the three athletes.
And that's, and that's fine. And that's fine. That would be sufficient.
What takes care of the college's needs. And if we put a million dollars into that and there's not enough money to build our two fields, what have we gained?
Well, there's going to be, that's, those are priority. The championship field's a priority.
The other thing that I think where we've run into issues and Nate, you and I have talked about this is it's irresponsible for us to look 2.5 million dollars in the face either. So there is some loyalty to our donors and we can't just say, no thanks, it's 2.5 million. It's irresponsible for us.
They're more than just ball field dollars.
My understanding though, is they were willing to go ahead and donate that money for other purposes, if they didn't do it towards.
Yes.
That is my understanding.
I hope so.
But that's still their call.
Yes.
That money is in their pocket, not in that agency's.
And that's where, you know, I appreciate like what John's saying. I appreciate that. It's like 100%. Like we still have, from the whole entire community, we would not be where we are without those donors.
They definitely started in the start, for sure.
So I think that's just some of what we're saying is like, that's a little piece of where we are. It's, there is some loyalty to that. And so.
And there's been this, understandable.
Yeah. That's the politics behind some of this, but that's also where we stand, where we have to be, we have to just be good conscientious of donors as well. And so that's, you know, where we say, there's some history there. We go back and forth. And that's why I think we are, you know, wanting to look forward 100%. That's what we want to do. But that's where we do, you know, have to take some of that stuff into consideration, so.
We understand.
I will say, the last I heard in October was this was a 26th. And January 8th was the first time I heard this was a March. So for us, the comment, the question being is, we don't want the college to hold that up. That was all sprung on us less than a month ago.
Which kudos to you guys and Mammoth, man.
My question back to Nate was, where are you going to find the funds? And he said, I might have to slow them up.
It is possible. We may not have.
But I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
So we did not think that they'd be able, so when we were going through our RFQ process, a lot of firms were saying nine months, whatever, 10 months. When Mammoth came on board, they said, we might be able to get this designed in six months. You know, and then when they said that, we thought, wow.
Let's take advantage. Prices are already going up, so we optimize this.
That's the big thing. Prices are going up all the time. So we need to get this done. We can't hold it. And they are the gold standard. I mean, they were impressive. And they are.
Just a side note, we had already had conversations with the farmer. And our plan was to allow him to farm the land this next year. That was.
And that's what.
That's what I'm saying. That was like in October. I didn't know that we were talking this season until three weeks ago.
I think we found that out, when was it? End of December when we had a conversation with Mammoth? Maybe beginning of January, I can't remember.
It would have probably happened after that, because we signed an agreement at the end of December.
I think it was the end of December they came out, so we could work on the agreement together. But I think at that time, that's when they said, we could have this designed in six months. Again, I don't know if that's true or not. I'm not a designer, but that's what they told us.
We have been impressed though, from the first meeting they came and our people told them what they wanted. And they came back and they had a redesign within, what, two days or so? It was like a day. They redesigned it. And I'm going, whoa, they moved quickly.
Well, even after we were here, they sent something right away.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody was positive.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for coming down. And it's been a great discussion and hopefully we can work through this because.
So I don't know if they have a plan for like next steps, but I think maybe it does involve more than just three quarters.
Can we plan something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and for us, I think it's important that these conversations, I would like to have a joint meeting between our council and the Board of Governors. The problem is, we're so hamstrung for time right now that if we wait till the end of February when they have a Board of Governors meeting or whatever the case may be, we're never going to move on this as quickly as we need to.
And I will tell you that my board does not operate the same as the city council, because they're spread all over the place. They employ me to give them advice. I have a board member sitting here who's taking minutes and I'm sure she's taking notes and she will also share with the board. But that is not how my board operates, is to come down and have a joint meeting. That's just something they're not going to do when they're living in Broken Bow and blah blah.
I think we've been doing some research. I think that there might be a possibility of a Zoom meeting. And I don't know if you could speak to that possibly.
That's what I found in the opening meeting, the governors, the Board of Governors. That's all it is.
I have asked my college attorney, but my guess is they'd say that's not their fault.
Okay. My biggest concern is if we don't have this conversation as a group, we're never going to get anywhere. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but I think between you and me having conversations, I can tell that time wise, we're getting closer and closer to when build out's going to have to occur. And I'm just worried that we're never going to get over the hump. And I think we need to get over the hump.
So Ryan, would you please check with your attorney and see if we can set up a Zoom meeting?
I will talk. I will talk to Ken and see what the flavor of my board is, but I can't see my board.
Thank you so much for doing that. We really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. And thanks for driving down. Thank you so much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is establish the user fees for the McCook High School Park. It's a 9.5. We have been looking at these fees. And we have some suggestions.
Okay, great. We're all ears.
We do our homework.
You want to turn this into Leanne for a break?
Sure.
I'm glad, Leanne, darn it.
Okay. We're trying to come up with fees that are going to be good for everybody. And we recognize the city staff is going to have to tell us if we're not coming up with the correct fees. And I'm going to give you some fees and then you guys can tell me if I'm out of my mind, okay? And I've talked to other people about this, even some people that know pools. Okay, 043. Five to 17 students. We would have a fee of four or five dollars. I mean, that's up to you guys to come up with what we would need. 18 to 54, which we consider adults.
Some of us do that.
Six to seven dollars. Six or seven. I mean, six or seven. And we don't want any nine dollar and 95 cents or anything like that. We want even dollars. 55 and over, which are seniors, okay?
Absolutely.
Four to five dollars.
Forty-five dollars.
And a family day pass, 15 to 20 dollars, a family day pass. Now, if we start looking at season passes.
Yeah, I am. Okay. How much was it?
15 to 20 dollars per day. Okay. Season passes. Single, any age, okay? 60 to 70 dollars. A family of three to four, 150 dollars. If you have five or more, 200 dollars. Or another way you could look at it, if you want to break it down, are 25 dollars per person over four. I mean, you can look at it however you want to do it. Then there's something new called a babysitter pass. That if you have a babysitter coming to the pool with the little kids during the day, maybe for, with a family pass, a 40 dollars for the babysitter with a family pass. Then we look at possibly lap swimming. Maybe three dollars a day to lap swim. And 45 dollars for the season to be a lap swimmer.
What if they get on the tubes though? I guess it's a $5 charge or something.
Whatever. You can add to all of this now. It's open to everybody to talk about this. This is just kind of what, looking at all the different communities that you provided us and talking to different people, this seemed to be something that is a point to start at. How's that? So that was just two starting points. Okay. Anybody have any suggestions?
I have a question. Talk. So because of my grandsons, a lot of places we've been going, both zoos and like York City and things like that, most parents are not going with their children because they're at work. But grandpa and grandma is. So you need to think about how you word them, that it's a grand, so at the zoo, we have the grandparents pass. And actually, it's my whole family. We got nine people in for less than 200 dollars to have them on a zoo. So, but just think about the grandparents, just because I know that's a lot of, when I go, that's when we're seeing like, is it the grandparents with their kids, not necessarily the parents? And sometimes we tunnel into as a parent and child situation and I don't think, I want to see people buy the passes. I think that's better for everybody, because once they buy it, they're going to go and use it. If we make it where parents aren't going to buy the passes because I'm never going. So just using the term grandparent pass or adding a grandparent pass with their grandkids is something to think about.
Go with the babysitter grandparent pass.
Some of the grandparent passes, I've got like three aspirin tums. I don't know, if we take our grandkids somewhere, I'm shot. I can't. You can take them home.
Okay, any other great suggestions? Yes.
Okay, because, and I could be off base, but I know we want to encourage people to use free and reduced lunches or at least apply. And so if there could be any sort of discount, maybe that would help encourage people to apply for those services that overall would help with property taxes, et cetera. And then also, I would like to know how much it's going to cost for the margarita nights on the.
She's not joking.
I'm really working hard on this. I know it's possible.
The pass is 369, so just keep that.
Do you have special insurance?
Yeah, we might have.
I mean, I promise not to.
Please, Rhonda, there you are. Yeah, you go to the pool. So tell us how.
Well, so, and I do, I look to Keith. Just to, and no, and Anna's not wrong about having, if you want to pay for the pool, have a liquor night. One, there's a couple, you know, I threw some ideas at you. One of the things, being literally up there in the pool, the adults are looking for, they want maybe some alone time. That's what the lap swimming is for. I think you do need to look at getting creative about, I wish we had the legs in place. That's down the road. But I think you do need to look at what is, that this is youth-based. We understand that. But the number of people this past summer while I was up there and lifeguarding that came up and said, we want, they love kids. Please don't take this wrong. They don't like kids, but they just want that. They want use of the pool too. And I think that's where that lap swimming, you know, that could be when the life, and the reason that that is so valuable is to get more use out of the pool. You're going to have the lifeguards up there cleaning, even the pool managers are going to be up there. Is that you can have access, a lap swimming at eight o'clock in the morning. Doesn't sound ideal right now, this time of year, but during the summer, eight o'clock's actually ideal. Noon, when they're getting ready. There's just additional opportunities that I would like the city to look at for use of, to get more use out of the pool. Yes, it comes down to lifeguards. I still know that. But I think, looking at different options, I think what Jamie said is correct about the grandparenting. I think that's where the babysitter, because you do see that. But I will tell you right now, please don't do quarters. And I think the other thing is to make it as simple as possible, because if you do do, if we do do it the same way, that you're looking at those 14, 15-year-olds that are working that front counter, because we need to have the 15 and 16-year-olds. And can you put it in there, the adults in lifeguard? That if they're working that front desk when they're coming in, we need to keep it as simple as possible when the people are joking and stuff. So that's the other thing, that we can't overcomplicate what we're asking for these kids when they're checking. when they're checking in and stuff.
We actually had the same conversation today with Sarah Calvert. So she had some little good suggestions for us that we're gonna take to-
It's, I think what, I hope everyone recognizes, and, um, I will tell you, I looked at waiver lease rates, they've gone up a dollar a year, so even the ones that you guys are seeing are out of date already. They, they did increase theirs for twenty twenty-five. Um, and so, you don't wanna make it cost prohibitive, you know, that was why the foundation, you know, did the money for last year, we wanted to remove that barrier, we understand it. But I also hope the city understands that, um, this is, uh, I guess, it is something that, uh, this, an amenity that the city needs to provide. It is, you're not gonna make the money, you, we can't make the money to cover the cost of the pool, we understand that. And so, I hope that when the rates are set, that, um, that it, yes, needs to offset some of the costs, but that it is still reasonable for, for the residents, though.
And these sound reasonable, don't they?
Yeah, they're, they're in line, if you look at, uh, like I said, waiver lease did, though, their, their pool is fairly comparable, um, to what, to what we have. Lexington, I actually thought Lexington is kind of low, um, for what they're, for what they're asking. But, and like Jamie said, when I go, we always hit the family rate, whether we're the zoo, the children's museum, or whatever. We wanna encourage, though, the entire family, we don't wanna make it cost prohibitive for, for the family members to, to be there. But if you break those down, it's still like a dollar a day or whatever.
What if there was an incentive to become a lifeguard, like you get a free pass to go away?
I think so. I will become a lifeguard.
That's what I started reading.
And I don't even drink, I just want no children in the lazy river.
So, yeah, I think you can read it, you know, um, if we don't have, yeah, if you don't have enough lifeguards. You know, Helma, he's there, lifeguard's back at Memphis on. What, once they, they're not giving it to them free, because then they quit. They, it's like, okay, we're gonna reimburse you.
It's like giving vacation days, uh, as you accumulate them, so.
So there's different ways to get creative, so, but I applaud you guys for trying to figure this out, so, because we're not paying for it, we're getting sorry.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, anyone else?
I do agree that we need to maximize the, for the timeframe that we have the pool open, we need to try to maximize that, the use of it, you know?
Maybe the foundation would buy lights for the little pool?
I want the reverse walk-in balcony, there's a lot of potential, yeah.
We actually have had some good conversations with the YMCA.
With the Y mean closes.
Yeah, doing some things this summer that would accommodate their programming, so. There are a lot of different possibilities that we can, uh, do with that swimming pool.
I know we're, we're hamstrung with our number of lifeguards, but I noticed a lot of the communities, several of them had split shifts, twelve to five, six to eight, and some are just open twelve to eight, which, yeah, I think that maximizes the opportunity. And if we have lifeguards available, I would encourage that, if you have as open as many hours, split shifts. I'm not a fan of split shifts, because give the employees an hour off and go download or whatever, you know? But, um, just maximum, because we're only open ten weeks out of the summer, if we're lucky, give or take. But, yeah, I was thinking something a little simpler than what Linda proposed for the, uh, daily fees, but then, after she explained it to me, that, well, you know, if you're a sixteen-year-old lifeguard, and you're at the front desk, and you think, okay, I go to school with that person, I know who they are, they look about my age. Then you break it off at eighteen to fifty-four, they're gonna look at that and say, well, they're older than me, you know? So they gotta be that age group, so that's easy enough to identify. And you get to fifty-five plus, and, you know, Darcy and I have gray hair, Jean has no hair. Um, that's fifty-five plus, I mean, it's not, really, it's stretching the imagination, they can say, okay, I know exactly what's charged. You know, it's profiling, I don't know if that's allowed.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, should we just go with the gray beard?
But, you know, I just thought one flat fee, but that wasn't really fair either. So I'm kind of leaning towards Linda's proposal, I kinda like that for that. And your family pass, season pass, that's right, that's what I was putting the numbers at, too, compared to what everybody else charges. Like Ryan said, trying to make it affordable, and we know we're not gonna fund the pool with the fees, we know that, but just give some money back. So you had a good idea. Let's put that in the calendar.
And I like Jamie's idea about a grandparent pass.
I like that.
Something, if we can incorporate that.
Do you want us to, we, it'll be okay if we just read back really quickly, just to make sure that we have anything wrapped?
Um, I had zero to four was free, five to seventeen, four or five dollars. Eighteen to fifty-four is six or seven dollars. Fifty-five and over would be four or five dollars. Family day would be fifteen to twenty dollars. Season single pass is sixty to seventy, family three to four, a hundred and fifty, five or more is two hundred. Uh, family pass for babysitter, however you worded that, was forty. And lap swimming was three dollars a day, and forty-five dollars for a season, and did that include the lazy river, then?
Or- Have you guys walked, have you done a reverse walk-in that thing?
No, but I'd like to.
No, that's, that's my problem.
That's why I-
There's a detail in that thing, that thing is-
That sounds nice. I could make it more, but it's a little tread more.
I have to come up with that. Okay, all right. We'll let you use it.
And then, something for the grandparents pass, um, maybe discount options, and then whatever.
Everything else that we're on to have it, though.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on, discuss proposed LB three fifty-four, which would eliminate state equalization funding for cities of the first class.
I don't like this topic of conversation.
Yeah, eliminating.
State's always cutting things out.
Well, and, and, I mean, again, this is just a discussion, you know? We, we saw this on the radar in the state legislature, and we wanted to make sure, and brought this up, because it actually kind of fits into the conversation that we've been having, trying to figure out your additional revenue sources outside the scope of what we've looked at in the past, whether it's in the form of occupation tax, or whatever the case may be. So, as everybody knows, Nebraska is at a shortfall right now, as far as their budget. I get around four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, or is it seven?
Four thirty-two.
Four thirty-two. So I was going back through, just kind of looking at the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five's budget. This year, we are receiving four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in state equalization funds, which is actually the third highest revenue source, and we're behind sales tax and property tax in our taxes section. We include that with our taxes section when we go through and do our budget. So it's a fairly significant source of funding that we receive. Um, you know, like I said, we're not saying that, that this is going to pass. I'm guessing it probably will play in discussions, and, and chances are, it may not. Uh, but the chance of it being discussed and passing, there's always that possibility that it does. And if it does, we need to make sure that we're making, making every effort to not cut services that we currently are providing, you know? And right now, we're up against our levy with, over forty-four cents, and that was, um, due to the, the implementation of the new wage study. We knew that we were towards the bottom of our rate for a lot of the different wages, and so we implemented that wage study, was, which created a significant jump. But we don't have a lot, a lot of wiggle room, plus LB thirty-four, it really restricts our ability, you know, to expand, uh, our property taxes in the future. It's gonna either be growth or CPI, you know, whichever one is greater. And then there are some questions as growth relates to LB thirty-four, I think there's some proposal legislation, try to clean some of that up, what growth actually means. One of the things that we talked about, I think at the last council meeting, was self-home occupation tax. City staff is in the process of, of, uh, doing some, some studies to figure out exactly what could be generated. We've also talked about the possibility of increasing the hotel occupation tax percentage. That's another thing we could look at as well, too. Uh, I know our PAC at the last time showed some of the occupation taxes and fees that other communities charge, those are things that we can look at. The one thing I think that was mentioned the last time when we talked, was a possibility of a food and beverage tax. We had done some numbers when we were talking about the recreational complex. That number actually exceeded seven hundred thousand dollars, which would require our vote of approval. So that one would be a little bit more complicated, because once you hit that seven hundred thousand dollar threshold, I think it was, or it's, uh, Nebraska rubber by statute eighteen dash twelve a week. That's where, uh, they talked about cities of the first class and new occupation taxes. But if there's a new occupation tax, and it generates seventy thousand dollars or more, that would have to go to the vote of approval. The others would not be nearly as large as far as the revenue that would be produced. So again, those are discussions that we would have to talk in. Again, it's not just occupation taxes, there are also some fee revisions that we can look at. I know we've done some work here recently regarding fees. Um, I know that Barry had brought some items forward regarding construction, I know that we looked at some other things as well, too. I know at the cemetery, we looked at adjusting those fees. But those are all things we probably need to look at, and continue to look at. And again, I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to discuss where we're at in conjunction with the prior conversations that we were having regarding trying to find additional revenue sources. So, not trying to say the sky is falling or anything like that, but we don't make widgets at the city of Mokok, you know, it's really hard for us to increase revenue. And trying to figure out methods and means to do so, uh, while continuing to provide the services that we provide, you know, but those are important conversations. So I'd rather have these conversations now than spring it on people when we're discussing our budget.
I had a citizen, um, email me, asking if we could put a tax on food trucks, because they don't pay property tax in Mokok. And didn't the state of Nebraska talk about that one time?
They should be paying sales tax.
They do pay sales tax.
They should be paying sales tax, so. And the one thing that I took away from, um, you know, some conversations that we had with Governor Pillen was here, was a possibility of some sales tax. Um, legislation, whether or not it's in tax, uh, whether it's taxes on services, that would potentially, uh, increase revenue. Sales tax is obviously the largest revenue source that we have, and the state's property tax is second. But there are a lot of things to kind of follow along with and keep our eyes on during this legislative session, because, you know, these are, it's important, you know? And these are things that have been prioritized by city councils prior in time to you, you know? And, uh, those are things that the public has found to be important, because they haven't been renewed over the years. So we wanna continue to try to provide the services that we are, but it gets harder and harder. And that, that stabilization money, you know, we talk about what that means as far as levy amounts. This last year, fifty to sixty thousand dollars, I couldn't remember the exact number, also fifty-five thousand dollars, that represented one cent on the levy. You know, so, that's eight to nine cents on the levy. That's two totally different pots of money, but that's, I guess, so that way everybody can kind of put their head around this, that's what we need. And we can't add more to the levy, because we're already up against the forty-five cent levy, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, moving on. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty ninety-five, amending the city McCutcheon Code of Ordinances. Mayor Tanner, I introduce the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirty ninety-five by title, and ask the clerk to please read the title.
Thank you. An ordinance from the city of Nebrask, amending the city McCutcheon Code of Ordinances, chapter ninety-one, entitled Fire Prevention Fireworks Poisonous or Harmable Gas Explosives, and Title Nine, General Regulations, Section ninety-one point thirty-seven, direct with references, and qualifications for insurance of sales permit and Section ninety-one point forty-three discharge of fireworks generally, amending the permit fee and the dates and times of discharge to provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the city McCutcheon Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for the date and effective and publication thereof.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty ninety-five has been read by title, and I move to approve upon its second and third reads.
Z.
I'll look some favor, but you have posted. We're all waking up at two. It's sweeter. My mouse is stuck.
Mine is thinking.
Refreshed, did you?
Come on, guy.
Come. I'm hungry, Darcy.
Sorry.
Jared, come refresh this.
Control R.
Hit Control R.
Uh, it just came in.
It just-
All right.
What if it doesn't come out?
Oh, doesn't die.
Oh.
Is it coming through?
Now I knocked you off board. Nope, it won't come. I'm Control R-ing, too.
It wasn't open on there.
Now hit it again. Okay. My mouse is stuck, oh, here it comes, there. She got it.
I think you're gonna hit four.
Hot work, yes. Just, there we go, okay. Everybody's in, right?
Five o'clock, it's cash Jane, the host casting.
Okay. Council comments? Nothing? Anybody? Okay, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-six P.M.